Welcome to the October ninth.
Eighth.
Oh, eighth, October eighth Board of Selectmen's meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. We are going to be entering into executive session and we will either be back by seven or shortly after. Thanks. Good evening all. Welcome to the Tuesday, October eighth Select Board meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Heather, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anybody here for assistance input? Anything online? Okay. Awesome. Okay, so we'll go right into 7:05. Use the public way for the Halloween Parade.
Hello.
We have our recreation girls are here.
Hey, how are you?
Good. How are you guys doing?
Madam Chair, if I may just interrupt, we have breaking news, very exciting news. You are looking right now at Kristin Pellerin, our new Recreation Director for the town of Foxborough.
Oh, congratulations.
Very good. There was an interview of seven candidates, a very competitive process, and members of the Rec Board, I know Chris Gallagher, HR, they were all involved in the interview process. And Kristin was by far the heads above and did a great job and so we were pleased to offer her the job and she accepted.
Yes, I'm very excited.
Wow. Congratulations.
Welcome to that position permanently.
Exactly.
Exactly.
They're all very excited.
Congratulations. Glad to hear it.
And speaking of recreation and our public way, okay, I have copies of our Halloween Parade flyer for each of you that I brought so you can have one. I hope you guys choose to show up for this event. Our application for the public way, we're holding our annual Halloween Parade. We are very excited to bring this back. We plan on holding it the same as we always have, the same route for the last couple of years, from Town Hall up Liberty and then up Central towards the Common. It will be from 2:30 to 4:00. We are still looking for a third judge, hint, nudge, nudge. I don't know if any of you would be interested, but I can share that along. And as far as this event, we're very excited. We're expecting a large crowd again. Last year, we had a tremendous crowd. It was well received and we're looking forward to another great event.
Thank you. So, have us any, any questions from anybody?
I assume the police department is fine with the request.
No issues.
Motion to approve the use of public way application for the Halloween Parade sponsored by Recreation on October 26, 2024, from 2:30 to 4:00 p.m. around the Town Common.
Second.
Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. And on a side note, we are still doing our uncommon pumpkin patch as well. We got a generous donation, or we will be getting a generous donation, so that will be coming before you shortly for pumpkins. And I would love to offer the Select Board an opportunity to carve a pumpkin for the pumpkin patch if you would like one. I'll make sure one is available for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Some of the other departments do it.
Yeah.
And they've done a nice job in the past. They come up with really unique, cute things.
Awesome. If for some reason, I'm not going to volunteer right now, but if for some reason if nobody volunteers, you can circle back around if you do need another judge.
Excellent.
Somebody else ends up stepping up.
Yeah, I'll check the sign-up genius tonight to see how we're doing on that.
There you go. If not, if you're stuck, please reach back out, for sure.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'll volunteer, Deb. I'm just kidding.
I was thinking about it.
I was gonna volunteer you.
No, no, no. I was gonna volunteer myself. I just wanted to be cute and say that to Deb.
I may do that.
Yeah. Maybe could we come as a...
As a team?
Team, or invite maybe any of the board members?
I would love, I'm gonna visit my mom down in Florida that weekend.
Yeah.
Welcome to your job. I think there's exciting news. I'm excited for you.
Thank you very much.
Deb's a little familiar with what you're stepping into.
Yeah. It's the best job.
We'll have to talk.
It's the best job ever.
Thank you. I'm very much looking forward to it.
You earned it.
Thank you.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, 7:10, the special town meeting warrant review. Okay, so I did, and I, so I want to bring something up. I mean, I think it's okay because it's all somewhat related. When we were doing the agenda, there was some talk about if the Board is gonna vote on all the warrant articles. So, I think it was probably just Doc and I at one point, that there was some talk. I thought, remembered from years back, matter of fact, we have a former Selectman here today. I think I reached out to you, Jim, and you had said that you're, when you were on the Board, your Board voted on all the warrant articles, just a recommendation, obviously, whether we're for them or not. And I think past Boards were, well, we'll make that decision year by year. I'd like to see us at some point, this isn't for tonight, but at some point, just to put everybody's in their mind that we should maybe have a policy that the Select Board is either going to vote them all or not vote them all, just so that it's consistent going forward. So, just to keep that in the back of your mind, that'll be discussion for another time, unless we want to, I don't know if we want to take a quick vote, if we want to do it just for, I mean, there's only 13, 12 articles? 12 articles, right? So I don't know if we want to have that, a quick discussion, if we should just vote them all, or if anybody has any input, what you think. I mean, I know in the past, Dennis, I think that conversation was before you were even on the Board, that I had brought up. I think then from now on, I've just been like, okay, whatever we want to do year by year. But I just, I just think it's good to be consistent, you know, whether we decide to or not. So, do you guys have a feel for this year?
Well, I think if I might through the Chair.
Absolutely.
You know, there's also, I know there's a thought of, you know, where does the Board stand on all these issues? But I also think there's something to be said for, especially this year, swaying the people in the audience because of how we vote. And more specifically, not for probably 12 of these 13 articles, but certainly the MBTA communities, I think is one where I would be afraid that if, let's say we voted five nothing, one way or the other, that it could sway the people in the audience one way or the other. I mean, and I don't know if that side outbalances the fact that we vote one way or the other, but I'd hate to think that, you know, if we all decide, you know, one way with the MBTA communities, and I still really don't know which way I'm going. I'm a lot more 50/50 now than I was at the last town meeting. I mean, I was definitely no at the last town meeting and I think we got some great ideas coming forward. But my concern would be one way or the other, just influencing the audience. That's just my thought on why, in the past, I, for the most part, you know, I've certainly been Chair for a few years, lean more towards no.
So, if I might.
Absolutely.
So I guess my opinion is that we've been elected to this role to represent the community and quite honestly, because some of the other Boards that would be putting this information out, like the Advisory Committee, aren't televised, this is one of the few opportunities that many of these items will come up for a discussion that will be in a forum that somebody else could see it or could replay it and watch it and at least understand, you know, what the thoughts were on why we say yes or no to something. I never worry about a town meeting, because I've been in town meeting where, you know, everybody was for something that was sitting on the stage and town said, yeah, no, thanks. So, I'm not really worried that we're gonna sway somebody and stop them from telling us that we're wrong. So, but I get your point, I understand your point. But I don't think, I think a lot of people in the town do look to us to at least have looked at the issues, have an understanding of the issues and how they'll impact the town, and want to know if we agree or disagree before they kind of make up their own minds too. Again, we could be in a position where we fully agree with something and the Advisory Committee fully disagrees with something, and again, it's up to the taxpayers to make their decision, but they'll hear the two different sides as to why. And it's also really, to me, it's hard to get up at town meeting as a, you know, to speak as a Board Member if we haven't basically made a decision on an item. All I'm really getting up there saying is my opinion as a, you know, a Board Member is that, you know, this is good or this is bad. So, I see your point, I just think that, quite honestly, we really should be trying to use this as one more platform to publicize to the community the items that are out there. And so that means obviously, on this particular one that you're concerned about, it will have to come in front of us and it will have to have an open discussion and people will be able to hear exactly what the issue is. And, you know, again, they may just still disagree with what we decide, but they'll at least have heard the forum.
Right.
And I absolutely understand your point. And it is, you know, it is a big responsibility, because then people are gonna be, you know, if we're gonna sway. But I think the whole time for me, Doc, it was just, you know, so we're okay with swaying one article, but not another, like, you know, for me, I'm more of a, like, all or nothing. And if the Board said, we don't want to vote on any of them, then that's what the Board would decide, I guess. So, but I get what you're saying. I'd want to make sure, I always forget to turn this way. I don't want to turn this way.
Right.
Dennis, do you have a feel one way or the other, or are you, I mean, you know something, I think too, those of us that have sat on Advisory before.
Right.
I think maybe we were asked to do that, so whether I did it there or here.
But the problem with Advisory is it's not televised.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be the great forum.
Exactly.
And when those two years where it was televised during COVID, I think we've had more, more information to the townspeople, and the feedback I got, it was wonderful.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, is part of the issue, we were going to vote on these tonight?
Some of them.
Some of them.
Yeah. Some that could be handled based on who's here tonight.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then on the next meeting, we'll vote on the others.
Right.
Yeah. And I mean, if for some reason, if anybody was not prepared, or they needed some more time for us to actually vote, there wouldn't be any harm if we didn't vote tonight, but we would just, if we brought it back to the next meeting, it'd be like, okay, we're just going to that article and voting. Like, we're not gonna have a whole big discussion again. If someone, you know, we're always able to, someone can speak up and say, I'm not ready to vote.
Right.
And we could push it.
Yeah.
If we feel like we can.
Right.
That's fine. So, I mean, we can always leave that as a backup plan.
So I think the idea is that the few articles that we are comfortable with having representation here tonight, that can talk us through any of the issues that are there, they're not, it's not obviously the MBTA one as an example. But, you know, if we can knock off a bunch of them and then just come back to the next meeting and have the appropriate people in place for those discussions. But again, I think it would be very different if the Advisory Committee was televised. But it's not, so we're kind of the only other option.
To get them. Yeah, I see that. Okay.
But do you, Deb, I know, I know this is your first term too, but...
This is, yeah, this is my first go-around, so I'm gonna defer to those that know better. And I think that transparency by going through all of them is what we're gonna achieve.
Okay. All right, so...
Yeah, I'm familiar with pretty much all of them. I think Marie has brought us up to speed with...
Yep, and we have, we have Jim and Linda here as well too for, on the articles. All right, so, so can we, can we feel comfortable just voting on what we have tonight, and then we can move forward? Okay. All right. Okay, great. All right.
So do you want, Paige, do you want to lead us through, I mean, obviously, we're not doing them all tonight, but do you want to lead us through which ones we can achieve?
Sure. So we have here on the agenda Article One, and Marie came tonight to talk the Board through in case you have any specific questions. Let me just pull up Article One. For the viewers at home who haven't memorized the entire warrant. So this is to see if the town will vote to adopt the recommendation of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee and to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money needed to fund the following supplemental capital request for FY '25. So that would be please for body camera payoff at $160,489 from free cash. Also please TASER payoff, $99,706 from free cash. Fire Department, the SCBA equipment, which is a grant match for the air packs, that's $50,000 paid out of ambulance receipts. Also fire, fire engine and ambulance lease, $351,210 ambulance receipts. And then finally, Public Works, the trackless municipal tractor, portion of it for $103,770.04 out of free cash. And Marie can explain a little bit why we're doing some of these now. That's a total of $765,175.04.
So, the body cameras and the tasers, we've been paying those out over five years. Our goal to have them here now in front of you guys and obviously the residents is, while we have the free cash, let's pay these off, get these off our books, because we have some pretty significant capital needs coming up. So that's really the intent behind paying those off now. These are forever costs, every five years, you'll need to replace these.
What's that the equivalent, two years of open leases?
So, you have the body cameras, I believe have three years left, and the tasers, two years.
Thank you.
The grant match, I mean, that's self-explanatory. Fire received a $680,000 grant, requires a match.
$50,000.
That's $50,000 there. The fire engine and ambulance, so this is replacing the next two vehicles in line. And then the trackless municipal tractor, this was an item that was approved by the CIP Committee in March earlier of this year, but the funding was deferred to the fall, so we're just bringing it back. And the reason why that one is being partially funded from free cash is there's an ARBA portion that you guys approved a few weeks ago.
So that was the extra, that was the APRA money that came back?
And we just had our free cash certified yesterday.
Yeah, we got that notice, yeah, today. That's awesome.
I didn't get the email.
Did you get it?
No.
I didn't either.
Yeah, we're supposed to be on that list, so we're working with them.
We don't get it.
I'll forward it to you.
Is there anything else you need? I think, quite honestly, I think this is a good move for the town at this point. The fire engine and the ambulance had a little conversation at the CIP meeting, because this is really buying our next versions, which are three and four years down the road. But I think at this point, you know, to, because it's such a delay, it used to be a much shorter time window from when you ordered. These two pieces of equipment, by the time we get four years down the road, are going to be extremely worn as far as miles and hours on the engines and stuff like that. And if we wait four years to do it, then we're even further behind the eight. So, it's not like we could, you know, it's a year away, and that would be a huge difference. So, that was that, as far as that.
And it's good the body cams and the tasers are staggered a little too. One's three years, one two-year, we don't have to chew them both in the same year.
And those are both, every five years replaced, both of those?
Yep. Yeah, so these items might get moved over to the operating budget, because they're technically, like the cruisers, they're forever costs. But we can explore how we'll handle that, because obviously you don't want a spike every five years, so you might just slowly build up to whatever that cost is going to be. But we'll get there.
Yeah, sounds good.
Dennis, Deb, any questions or concerns?
I'm good.
I would move that we approve Article One.
Yeah.
Motion to approve Article One.
Do you want to recommend approval, or do you want to actually approve?
Oh.
I guess recommend approve, yeah.
Yeah, that's a better term.
Motion to recommend approval of Article One, FY '25 capital budget request.
A total amount of $765,175.04.
Thank you.
So what?
Doc seconded.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Do you want me to, do you want to read?
Yeah, Article Two. To see if the town will vote pursuant to Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three-E and a Half to increase the spending limit for the existing police and fire apparatus revolving fund for FY '25. And that would be, the FY '25 amended authorization for police and fire would be $400,000.
And what is it right now?
$200,000. So it's essentially $100,000 for each. The reason this is being proposed, or the spending limit's being proposed to increase is, so anytime a police cruiser or a fire apparatus is required for a police or a fire detail, there's a separate fee that's added on to those details, and these funds are segregated in this revolving fund. Now, police and fire can only use that for repair, replacement, or purchasing new vehicles. One of the recent things that they did is they increased their rates to match the FEMA cost codes. So these rates, for example, right now, if a cruiser is required for a detail, we're able to charge the vendor $22 the hour. I think prior to that, it might have been $10 or $12. For fire, if an engine is required, you could charge $163.55 per hour, and it's a minimum of four hours. So, they're obviously collecting a lot more revenue, so we're just proposing to increase that spending limit. So, as they, you know, as they have the need to spend the funds, they'll be able to.
Okay, and...
Is it, are we authorizing the right to spend $400,000, or are we authorizing the right to have a revolving fund up to $400,000?
The expenditure, so the yearly spending limit.
Okay.
Yeah, the revolving fund was established several years ago, we're just...
Does it have a cap?
The, well, right now it's $200,000. We're proposing to increase that to $400,000. And going forward, any revolving funds with the Municipal Empowerment Act, there was a change in there that basically said that going forward, unless you're amending the spending limit, you don't have to vote the yearly spending limit at town meeting. So that's one less article to worry about.
But then they can, so they don't need any approval on what they're spending it on?
That's correct, yep. Essentially, the $400,000 would be their forever spending limit. Now, if they want to increase that or decrease that, they would have to go back to town meeting.
But if they're buying stuff, it would still have to go through CIP.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So it's still a process.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
It just can't go...
Okay.
Yeah, you'll still see...
Could these funds have a million-dollar balance in the revolving account?
Yeah, there's, because they're voted under Section Fifty-Three and a Half, there's no cap.
No cap, okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to approve Article Number Two, Police and Fire Apparatus Revolving Fund Spending Limit Increase to $400,000.
We're just gonna change that to say recommend to approve?
Oh, excuse me, recommend.
Recommend approval, okay.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the third, Article Three. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to the Fire Stabilization Fund for fire equipment apparatus repair and acquisition.
So, this fund, I think we're now into year two of this Fire Stabilization Fund. So, if, so this fund basically, so the fire department currently performs repairs for other communities. If they were only, obviously, I mean, they're performing repairs on their own vehicles and equipment. But back when they were looking to establish a separate fund to account for these monies, we had reached out to the state to see if we could potentially set up a revolving fund for that operation. What they told us is, when it comes to revolving funds, if it's benefiting not only Foxborough, then you can't set up a revolving fund. Because they are performing repairs for other communities, we can't legally establish a revolving fund. It would have to be for services, programs and services that serve Foxborough only. So, the other option for this operation is to petition the state to allow us to establish an enterprise fund. That's obviously a bit of a process. I'm not sure what it would actually entail. But we have that option. The only other option is to continue to do what we do with this Fire Stabilization Fund. So each year, as they're collecting the revenues for these repairs, the monies go into the general fund, because we can't legally segregate it. Then what happens at the end of the fiscal year, once our free cash is certified, we will always have this transfer out, or transfer into the fund from free cash. So right now, for this article, we're proposing a $350,000 transfer from free cash into the fund. So far, they've collected $659,000. We, back in the spring, we transferred $300,000, so we're looking to transfer the other $350,000 into that fund.
And the Fire Stabilization Fund is used for?
It funds the mechanic and then the parts and the materials that they're purchasing.
Which has to be done at town meeting.
Yes. So you'll always see a transfer in and an immediate transfer out.
So Article Three and Four kind of go together?
Yes. Yep, and Article Four would be to transfer money out of that fund. So currently, we're using about $200,000, so $50,000 towards the mechanic and about $150,000 towards the parts. That obviously will continue to increase as their operations and, you know, they take on more communities. So Article Four is to transfer, back in the spring, we transferred $50,000 into their fire expense budget to cover parts and materials, but now we're seeing that they need a lot more than that. So we're proposing to, so out of the $350,000 that's going into the fund, we're gonna pull $100,000 right back out into the fire budget.
So that was Article Four.
There you go.
So, Article Three?
Motion to approve Article Number Three.
Recommend.
Recommend, excuse me.
It's okay.
Recommend to approve Article Number Three, Transfer to Fire Stabilization Fund.
Do we need to say any amount of $350,000?
No.
That, I mean, that amount will be in the motion, but not in the article. I don't think you need to.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we know Article Four, do you want?
Yep. Motion to approve Article, recommend to approve Article Number Four, Fire Stabilization Fund Transfer to Fire Budget.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Thanks, Marie.
Have a good night.
Okay, Article Five, the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Bylaw Cleanup. Jim and Linda.
So just to set the stage, so this Article Five came up back during the appointment process, and the bylaw would be to see if the town will vote to amend the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Bylaw as follows. So I'll allow these two lovely individuals to explain it, but this was all a result of some issues that came up during the appointment and some concerns about the way the bylaw was written.
Thank you, Paige. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. For the record, Jim DeVales for McKenzie Lane.
Linda Walsh, APD.
So I'm not on the committee, but I'm kind of working the bylaw since the inception. So, as Paige said, in June, we came in front for an appointment, and the topic came up of term limitations, which we've been having this committee for 10 years, it's the first time it's come up. So, we were asked to go back and revisit it. I think Town Council gave their opinion back in June that we were able to vote the committee members, but clean up the language in the bylaw for the meeting. So what we did is we struck anything related to term limits, which goes hand in hand with every other committee in town. And the other thing that was brought up was, would we consider adding another member-at-large that represents just a common, for lack of better words, common person? So we went from seven members, and they're all categorized, so we added a second member-at-large, so that brought it to eight. And then we got into the topic, it's an even number, and then... And then there's another kind of a group that is underrepresented, underrepresented in the eight members that we had. So we added another one called social institutions. So now it went from seven to nine members, and I think there's a need under social institutions to have a member represent one of those groups.
Who would be classified as a social institution?
It's funny, because I had that same question.
It would be a club, right?
Yeah, so if you, basic definition, a social institution is a group or organization that has specific roles, norms, and expectations, which functions to meet social needs of society. Family, government, religion, education, media, banks are all examples of social institutions. So I just took that right out of the dictionary, so it's clear.
Like the JCs and the Knights and those folks, you know, the community support.
Okay, probably the only comment I would have about that, and I know you guys did a lot of work, I kind of feel now you're zeroing it in on not just having another resident. You know, now it's gonna be, like, I thought, you know, that you've hit, like, with the schools, recreation.
No, that is, there is a resident, number eight is a resident, correct?
The eight, yes, well, if you look at your selectman handbook, it says you're responsible for appointing, and the emphasis should be on full-time residents of Foxborough. So if you remember the reasons, like, why do we want someone from Harwich telling us what to do?
Yeah.
But you also have the ability in your twenty-twenty-one handbook that says to fulfill the mission of the, any of the advisory committees that you're appointing, you could look outside of the town. So if you have two expert or very qualified residents that want for the position, then you appoint them. If you've got one that's not a resident, but has an expertise that outweighs the benefits of being a resident, you can appoint that person as well. So it gives you the ability to go either way on any committee in town.
Yeah, maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't say it how I meant it. I guess I was thinking, like, when you thought you might go nine, so obviously, odd number is better, right? So instead of, you didn't think about just making them just, like, at-large and not? I guess what I'm saying is now they're, they have to come from a, you have.
One is.
Oh, I see, so we have three, yeah, so if, I think I hear what you're saying.
Well, and you know something, maybe, maybe specifically because you're deciding to keep a non-resident as one of your at-large. I don't have a problem with that, but I'm just saying, now you're only leaving one other resident. Am I saying, do you understand what I'm saying?
Basically, the question is, why make it a, why make it, I mean, it could be somebody from a social institution that fills the role, if they're a resident of town. Why not make it three, basically, at-large? And then it's kind of like you have a bigger representation that potentially is just a residential-based person, not tied to a specific group.
Yeah, so, and we could have had all nine of them residents, and, but I think at the time, when we were putting this committee together, there was a lot of thought process. So if you look at when you're appointing, there's someone from the public schools that was a need, Board of Recreation, Public Safety, Religious Institution, Human Service and Council on Aging, private education or institutional sites, and a member at large, and that's what we had. So when we brought in another member at large, that's what, I think, I was at that meeting when we said, are there other groups that are underrepresented? And the JCs or social groups are not in here. So if we brought in another member at large, there would still be that void, unless we happened to find a member at large that was part of a social organization. But we thought strongly that we wanted that group represented here in perpetuity.
Yeah, I guess maybe, so.
Would it be possible, if you can't find somebody, to write this, if you can't find somebody from a social institution that wants to be on it, that it could, you know, flip to just a, an at-large? Is there a way to just kind of, like, if any one of these couldn't be filled, because nobody wanted to step forward to do it?
Figure, right, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I would.
That'd be filled by an at-large.
Yeah, we, in the ten years, we haven't had that problem, and I would suggest the committee works harder to find that people. Because I think it's important for us to have those people represented. So if there's nobody from, the town's been really good with the police fight, all those, but say we don't have someone from the religious side, then it's up to the committee to reach out to all the churches and say, hey, this is important, and bring that person in. So it hasn't been an issue that we haven't been able to fill.
Because I guess, so my lack of, lack of knowledge of it, so the Foxborough JCs, everybody's a Foxborough resident, or no? No, that, so I guess maybe that's why, I just, like, I was gonna say, if that were true, then that person, you could grab that person, if it was just another member at large, it could be somebody who's on the JCs or just another.
So it's another example, say, the YMCA, a great group, that's a social. If we, if we have the president of the YMCA, and he lives in five towns away, I would bet he has a great deal to offer to the committee, but he's not a resident. So we would ask him to be part, he would come in front of you, and you would say, you know, it's never come up before until this year, are you a resident? And if you say, if he says no, you have the ability to say yes or no. If you feel that strongly that it needs to be a resident, then you would decline it and tell the committee to try again. So this checks and balances.
Well, yeah, I get it, Amy's, you know, you've got your superintendent of schools, who's representing, you know, your schools, and she's not a resident. I guess I'm not keen in on it having, necessarily having to be a resident, but I just feel like you, the fact that you're already taking an at-large member, and you guys were very clear, you want to keep Bob, and he's a non-resident. So, and that's fine, this is your committee. But now, you're, by adding the two positions, you're, could technically really only be leaving room for one resident.
You can look at it that way.
You know what I mean?
But I, if you read the goals and objectives, the goals and objectives is sexual abuse awareness, education, dissemination, awareness. Honestly, I don't care if you're a resident or not. If we're going in that direction.
Yeah.
I don't want to check off a box that someone's a resident and then get stuck with someone because it's just a resident, not get the best and the brightest. And it hasn't been an issue. I think if we try to make it an issue, it becomes one, but I just, it hasn't been, and if it's not broke, don't fix it, is what I'm thinking. No disrespect, but it hasn't come up until, until this last year.
Yeah. Anybody else?
And what's that?
Anything?
I think this is a unique committee, if you look at all the committees.
It's the only one in town that, no disrespect to the board, I was on the board when it happened, but it bypasses the selectman, goes right to the town, and the town, nobody can get rid of it unless it's a town vote, and we felt that strong, so it's a little unique.
Yeah, but you're beyond looking for volunteers, you're looking for people with a specific skill set and experience, which is different from a lot of the other committees.
Could be, yeah.
Yeah, not necessarily the experience, but what that person can bring to the group that they represent, you know, like religiously. We want to make sure, like, Bill is in charge of religious, so he goes to all the other churches to make sure that they're following some type of guideline. If it's not our training, then it's someone else's that's, that we approve, you know? And that kind of keeps tabs on everything. Doesn't mean that he has experience in, you know, sexual abuse more than anybody else, but what it means is, he has the contacts, and so it outreach is from there, just like recreation.
I think Debbie, you were a member, right, weren't you on the committee at the beginning?
Yes, yes, and it's daunting.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work, and your committee is on it.
Yeah, and because of you, I mean, your expertise was recreation.
Right.
So all of the sports.
Teachers, clinicians, anybody that was anywhere near the kids, the counselors, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, listen, you guys know your committee better than anyone. I think, I think I just feel like you're locking into, like, you might have a resident that has training, but you, now you're getting right back to where you were, where it's only certain places you're gonna search for. Because you're gonna pick your, you're gonna pick your committee anyhow, you know.
If somebody has that experience, they've got to be involved with one of these other groups too. You know what I'm saying? Like, whoever that person is, that we feel like, well, they're really trained well in something, they've got to fit into something here, one of these eight categories, they have to, right?
I think I buy into what you're saying here as far as a social institution, but I buy into it from the sense that it's for the outreach to push back the information to a broader group.
Or to pull in the broader group too.
Exactly, so it's that resource versus, you know, where my problem was, was just somebody who'd been on the committee for a period of time that didn't live here anymore.
Yeah.
There's a, to me, there's a very big difference between that, because this is how you're going to get the message out or get the message, you know, the information of what's going on inward. And that's why you do have people like the, you know, superintendent, who obviously has control over four hundred and fifty employees in town and, you know, through five buildings type of thing. So I don't, I personally don't have an issue with the way this thing is done. I do like the fact that at least you got another member at large from the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, I like seeing the two member at lodges, absolutely. And ultimately, eventually gonna be in front of us anyway, correct? To approve them, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, when.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the way it's set up, it's three per year, so three, 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 in perpetuity.
In front of us.
Yeah.
Great, great job, thank you for all that effort. Little bit of flip on this radar last night.
Little bit, yeah, we got through it.
Yeah, we did. Well, it's funny, it was the trickle-down of doing other things in other committees that filtered down on you guys.
And thanks to Katie, I know you went back and forth with Bill Dudley on the emails and tweaked this at the end, appreciate that.
So?
Okay.
Motion to approve Article number five, child sexual, recommend to approve Article number five, child sexual abuse awareness bylaw cleanup.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we're gonna skip six?
Oh, no, let's do it.
Yeah, well, I can do six.
Can we take?
Let me see, not six.
No, no, skip six.
I'm looking at four point oh six, sorry, it's Article eight, I'm gonna skip ahead to. Article eight. Is somewhere here after MBTA Communities, Article eight, okay. So these are all me now, so Article eight, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of town of Foxborough, chapter two seventy-five as follows. Amend the zoning map, Foxborough MA, that is dated November sixteenth, nineteen ninety, as amended from time to time by rezoning the parcels of property that are situated at sixty-nine Central Street and identified as Assessor's Map ninety-two, lot one thirty-eight, and at seventy-five Central Street, identified as Assessor's Map ninety-two, lot one thirty-seven, from the R fifteen Residential District to the General Business District, GB. And further, amend the corrected Foxborough Center overlay district plan that is dated May twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen, by extending the area delineated on such plan so as to include such parcels therein. Such map and plan amended are on file with the town, the office of the Foxborough Town Clerk. So by way of explanation, the board, I know, is familiar with this, we've talked about it. This is the, one lot in question seventy-five is the old, well, the current slash soon-to-be-old senior center. And then the lot next to it is, so that it runs continuously, so it'd go from CVS across the street to that multifamily, three-family, next to the senior center, and then the senior center. So we'd be basically extending the general business and the Foxborough Center overlay zoning two parcels over to extend over to the senior center. And the reason this was discussed is it could, in fact, increase the value of the senior center at the time we go to sell it.
It also technically makes it more usable, because right now, it could only really be used as a residential once it comes on the town control.
Correct.
So it's, it's.
Opens the opportunities, yes. Very good, any other questions?
Yeah.
Approve to, oh, no, recommend to approve Article number eleven, disposition of land at the.
Eight.
Oh, excuse me. Disposition of, no, that's about one. Excuse me. Recommend to approve Article number? Eight. As presented.
Second.
Anybody second?
Is that good enough? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion?
Bill seconded.
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're probably still on the article before, it's forever, it's forever.
Okay, now we're moving on to Article ten, and that is, to see if the town will vote to allow the following parcels to be incorporated into the sewer service area and to amend the sewer service area map with the parcel so designated. So it would be thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-one, forty-two, Main Street, forty, Two Fails Place, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, Main Street, four Bentwood, fifty-five Main, one Garfield, sixty-two Main Street, two Garfield Streets, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-three, seventy-five, Main Street. Now, this is all, sorry.
We already have seventy-six in, right?
Yeah, we already have seventy-six in, so if you recall, seventy-six is our future community center. We are working with the person who has a project across the street, and they've been doing the design work for the sewer. So what this would do is allow sewer to run down to seventy-six Main, and as customary, we spoke to Chris Gallagher and DPW, and customarily, when that happens, when you have a sewer line running that way, all the lots in between are then added into the sewer area map. So these folks haven't asked for this, there's no guarantee they will want to tie in. If they were to tie in, they would have to pay to tie in, the town wouldn't be doing it for them, but this, they wouldn't have the opportunity to be allowed to tie in without this vote. So this is just opening up the opportunity for them, it's gonna be their decision down the road.
Pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, and I think obviously, we all agree that we want to get to seventy-six Main Street.
Right.
And if you're gonna go buy these properties, like we have in other parts of the town, they have, should have that right.
Yeah, when we, when they run the sewer line, so, do they, do?
I assume they put stubs.
So the stubs are just there, so, I mean, we're saying that's okay now. If someone here says, oh my God, well, I don't have the twenty-five thousand or whatever it is to tie in, right? And they want to do it in the future, they could, they could do it in, they could do in the future, the stubs are there, and so. Correct. Yeah. Yeah, at their expense in the future, yes. Their expense either way, other than the stubs being there for them, right? But we like to do the stubs because we don't want them to tear up the road. So that's the benefit to requiring that anything be stubbed out, then that way, it minimizes disruption for residents and for our infrastructure. Do you have anything down there, Dylan?
Why is, why is, which one, what is seventy-three that is sixteen-hundred gallon?
I don't know, I would have to look at that. I'm wondering if it's that, that big, that.
The big warehouse?
Century Building, maybe, that's what I was guessing.
Well, the other side of Century twenty-one.
No, it's not, it's on the side of the street. It's on the odd side, which is across from Century.
I don't know, we'd have to ask Chris.
No, Century was, is odd, because it's on my side, Century twenty-one?
Oh, no, I'm talking about Century.
Century Building.
The Century Building.
And that's that big warehouse?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's on, right, that's on the even side, unless it is the Century.
Apartments.
Seventy-three is apartments.
What number are you?
Oh, they do have a bunch of apartments, like, eight or nine of them, yeah.
I figured that'd be reasonable, just large capacity, okay. And we obviously have the capacity.
Yes, we do.
Recommend to approve Article number ten, amend sewer service area map.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Do we have any idea of how much capacity we have left after?
We do, and I wish I could remember it, because at AdCom the other night, we talked about it. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna massacre it, but it was. It, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna massacre it, but it was, we have quite a bit.
It's a lot.
And when Chris was talking about, well, what if all of this Main Street got developed, it was a literal drop in the bucket, because AdCom was like, oh, okay. So, we can get more specific numbers, but I remember it was...
So, we would have no problem maybe going down to the fire department and having capacity for that?
Yeah, no issue. According to what Chris was...
That's one we need to keep in the back of our mind, yeah. Which probably opens up that entire large apartment complex area and stuff.
Yeah, and he has those numbers in the back of his mind already, because we've, we've already approved the Chestnut Green into our sewer area map.
Okay.
So, it's already part of that. Okay, so, now, we're on to... Yep.
We did.
Did you guys vote?
Okay.
Okay. So, now, we're on to Article 11. So, that is, "To see if the town will vote pursuant to general law, Chapter 40, Sections 15 and 15A, to change the purpose for which the town owned a property owned at the rear of 34 School Street, further identified as Assessors Map 79, Parcel 16.1, with an area of approximately 1,957 square feet, plus or minus, is held to the purpose of disposition, sale, or lease, and further to authorize the Select Board to convey by sale or lease all or a portion of said town-owned land. Said real estate disposition shall be completed in compliance with general law, Chapter 30B, to the extent applicable, and further, the Select Board and other town officials shall be authorized to take all actions necessary to carry out this article." So, we've discussed this as well. This is the small parcel of land that's behind Judy's Florist, and it's, it's just a little patch of land that is inexplicably owned by the town. So, Bill had the idea of selling it, putting it on the warrant. I can tell you that Mr. Duffy from Judy's didn't even know about this, but actually reached out on his own to say, "Hey, what, what's gonna go on with that piece of property?" So, I informed him of this potential sale, and he'll keep an eye on it. And then, we've always said, we don't know if Doug King might be interested, and we, we imagine those would be the only two parties, but you never know. It would be open for disposition to anybody who, you know, the highest bidder, basically.
Right. We could buy and just have it for our own parking to go up to the restaurant.
There you go.
There you go.
Over there all the time, anyway. But then again, I could walk across the street.
Yeah, you'd have a longer walk.
Have a longer walk.
Any questions on this one?
That was a great idea. Yeah.
What's that? Disposition of, recommend to approve Article Number 11, disposition of land at the rear of 34 School Street.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 12, this one, you already approved a license for National Grid for 70 Elm Street. This would be to grant an easement, and by my way of understanding, is we don't even have a choice. So, bottom line is, is we need to grant this easement, but this will formalize it through a town meeting vote.
So, the basic concept here is every building that we do, when we, when we do new underground services and, you know, the equipment are related to it, National Grid no longer will just come onto your property. They, they want to have the, the right to come on and do it, to make repairs and fix the lines, if something were to happen. So, we did it on the high school project back, you know, many years ago. We've done it, you know, we did it here at Town Hall, when we built this building, to give them the access across here. So, it, it is just, to your point, it's not like you have a choice, but it's almost just like a utility easement in general.
It's a good idea.
It's a good idea. All right.
Good.
Motion, recommend to approve Article Number 12, National Grid easement.
For the electrical ser, underground electrical service on Elm Street.
For the underground electrical service.
Just a little bit. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the last two, I'm gonna bundle, Article 13 and 14. Hey, I thought we only had 13 articles, Katie. What happened? We went up to 14?
MBTA, we needed two.
Oh, okay, got it. That's a switcheroo. So, Article 13 and 14, 13 would be to see if the town will accept as a public way Peterson Lane, which is in London Estates, up by the Sunoco Station, just before Conrad's and Public Safety. Also, in that subdivision is Offallet Way. Both of those are part of London Estates. So, those now have been constructed for a long enough time. The wetland replication area has been accepted, apparently, and the planning board, obviously, will be voting on this prior to town meeting, but Chris Gallagher doesn't have a concern as of right now. We always wait for the last-minute report, but basically, the DPW and planning are recommending that these two roads could go ahead for street acceptance.
So, maybe our recommendation on this one should be recommend to approve, subject to final DPW and planning board approval.
Sign off. Perfect.
I never knew that was called London Estates.
I didn't either. Fancy.
Yeah, very fancy.
Yeah.
Is there a second on that?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll reverse the...
Did you hear what Bill said? He had a good motion?
Bill did the motion.
Yeah, I'll just say that one more time.
Motion to recommend approval of Articles 13 and 14, subject to the final approval of the DPW and planning board.
Well done.
That all standards are met, or whatever.
Been a long time, huh? Is this kind, this has come up before? And then, not already? Yeah, so, they were required to do a wetland replication, and it had to survive for two years, and they didn't start it. So, by the time they came, we're like, you are at least two years off, so, go back to replicate. So, they did. Like, I feel, I, yeah. I feel like maybe when I was on AdCom, it may have, like, come across, like, and then... Yeah, I think they got to a certain point, and then we went... And then been pulled. Yeah, okay. All right, so, in second?
Yeah, Deb did.
Oh, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Everybody's good with both articles, aye or aye?
Yeah.
So, basically, what do we have? Just MBTA Communities and accessory?
Yep, MBTA and accessory apartments. And we have Barney and Catherine coming to the next meeting, and I even sent a message over, I don't know if planning, but I just asked planning, maybe if the planning board was willing to come that night, it might be a nice opportunity for the two boards to get together again, but I don't know what their availability is.
Okay. Great. Appreciate it.
You know, you're right, Bill. It would be a good way to get it in front of the MBTA, in front of the computer community again.
I think, you know, I think Catherine's done a great job.
Right.
But it's only been a few people at those meetings, so...
So, with her coming here and explaining it again.
Yeah. And, and again, you know, we don't have to agree with it, we, but it's just...
But hear it.
At least everybody can hear it.
Oh. Righty then, that's good.
Okay.
Righty.
Almost right on time.
So, we manage those updates?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So, big news from the fire department, and good news for one, and bad news for the rest of us, is Tom Buckley is retiring on Friday. We're thrilled for Tom, and the rest of us are sad to see him go. He's had 34 years of service, you know, he's had a tremendous involvement with the accreditation. You know, I know he supports our fire chief tremendously, and I know, you know, Chief Kelleher is, is gonna really miss having Tom as his right-hand man. There is a gathering to celebrate Tom on Friday at the fire station, if you're interested in attending. And then, associated with that, there's been news of a promotion. Deputy Chief Thomas Kenvin is being promoted to Assistant Chief, effective Sunday, October 13th. So, the, the baton is being passed, so, so, congratulations to, to Tom Kenvin. He's also a tremendous member of our team. We did receive a grant for Municipal Road Safety Grant Program for $22,489,000. It's, the purpose is to reduce roadway crashes, injuries, and fatalities. Certainly, we're all aware of the recent tragedy over on 106, so I will, you know, when this, when we get this money through, oftentimes, these grants are quite limited in what you could use them for, but certainly, when, you know, when we have the actual money in hand, I'll coordinate with Police Chief and with Chief Chris Gallagher to see if anything can be done to direct this money towards 106. I can say that I did speak to Chris Gallagher after the last meeting, and he has retained a traffic consultant to begin looking at that intersection. It is not a state highway. It is our problem.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, that's what my fear was. So, they are, we do have TEC onboard, that's our traffic consultant, to start taking a look at it. Whatever it is, it'll be expensive and, you know, time-consuming, because that's traffic. But we are, even prior to last week's meet, or last meeting, he was on that, so, just so folks at home know that. We've also been informed by Mass Cultural Council that they were, we received a $9,000, $9,600 allocation through the local cultural council program. That's, I think, the standard amount. I know they're gonna be seeking some local funding next year. The benches, I don't know if folks have seen, but the bench project is underway. Some benches are up, so if you want to go over to the common, take a look. They were out there working as late as this afternoon.
They were, they were still there when I walked over here, at 6 o'clock.
Oh, were they? Okay. Yeah, they're, they're working fast, furiously over there. Once everybody get off the common, that let, let them start their work. I'll just do my regular reminders. We have a special town meeting on November 18th at 7:00 PM. AdCom is gonna be meeting on October 16th and the 30th. The MBTA Communities will be discussed, I believe, on the 16th. I don't know if it'll wrap to the 30th, but I know that's when Catherine will start talking about that with, with AdCom. Financial Summit, November 26th at 5:30. And then, again, the MBTA Communities meeting is tomorrow night. I think that's our last one, at least part of the outreach, and then we'll be on the next phase. And then, just a reminder that you all are invited Monday, October 29th, from 1:00 to 3:00, to the Marilyn Rodman. A formal invitation should be coming from the Mass Gaming Commission. And then, we did get an email from Schneider Electric. So, they started Tuesday, 10:01, October 1st, with Mass DEP with on hand to view the activities of demolition. Some pictures were sent over. It's, demolition will become more visible. The sidewalk closure and detour for Nippon Zadav will be in place the week of October 14th, and they're, they're waiting on temporary fencing, and they're working with DPW. They have been working with the neighborhood. The asbestos supervisor from DEP reached out to one of the neighbors, and apparently, one of the neighbors seemed satisfied, so they've been having no other issues with the neighbors. I also can say, there is a flyer that was handed out to all the neighborhoods, so if you want to pass that down, just to see, that's what went out to all the neighbors. And then, one bit of news is they will be extending their exterior work hours to 5:00 PM each day, only on the weekdays, not on the week. Originally, they thought 3:30 PM, but they've been having some good work, so they want to keep going, so they're gonna work till 5:00 PM.
Do you know if there's any issues around the, the use of the bus yard with the demolition trucks and stuff like that coming and going?
I haven't heard of anything.
Okay.
Have you heard of anything?
No.
No, I guess...
It's, it's the other end.
They're starting on the opposite end?
Yeah, it's way over down the other end.
Oh, okay.
As a matter of fact, they're not even talking about the middle and the, the brick buildings.
Okay, okay.
That's down the...
Yeah, no, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Current open positions, Conservation Agent, DPW Equipment Mechanic, and a Water Tech. I already mentioned the Recreation Director, and that's all I have for news.
Can I just make one comment on, on the thing that, on with Catherine as far as the MBTA thing? Both Steph and I went to the last meeting, and while I understood some of the residents' frustration, if you will, with the, the whole situation, I really, you know, at one point in time, just asked them to, to back off and let her do her job, and her job was basically to explain to them, you know, what options are. She is not somebody who can go to the state and tell them they can't do something. She's, you know, again, that falls to Paige or, or to us as a board. She's our representative to give us what options we have. Whatever the town decides, the town decides. So, I think after we had that conversation, everybody kind of just stopped and let her go through, but I think it was frustrating for her, and I can appreciate the fact that all she was trying to do was explain what was out there when it really wasn't being given a chance. So, I hope in the next meeting and in future meetings that, you know, residents realize that, again, she's an agent of ours, she's, she's representing us in, in doing what we've been requested to do, and what the town decides to do with that information is totally up to the town.
Yeah, I mean, she, she, I thought she, I thought she did a great job.
I thought she did, too.
I thought she did a great job, and she also, I mean, she was very clear. I know the people sitting in this room, you're saying, "You do not want this." I am not, I'm here just to give you your options. That's all her job is, and I, I thought she did a fabulous job, and I'm really gonna try to go tomorrow night, too, because I, I thought it was, that she was going to be, it was like a meeting, and it was giving people just other opportunities to come, and then I realized, someone said, "No, she's, you know, each meeting, there's something new, and it's progressing." So, I want to make sure. And, you know, something I, I, like Doc mentioned earlier, I was very on the fence. I mean, nobody wants their community then uprooted, you know, and diff, you know, everything's different. But I will tell you, she, she's got some, you know, like Bill said, one of the...
Options.
That she had brought forward, you know, it's, it's, it's a good, good option, you know, whether the town wants it or not, that's, again, that'll be just, you know, decided at town meeting, but she's, she's working hard at bringing us some good options, so, anyhow. Okay, so, all right, so, Select Board update. So, this is kind of a, a school issue, but after last week reading in the reporter, I just thought it absolutely deserved to be mentioned here, about the Taylor School receiving a Blue Ribbon School Award from the U.S. Department of Education. I wrote down just a couple of, of quick facts that, from the article. 356 schools across the entire nation were given this award this year, only nine in Massachusetts, and, and it's given for academic excellence, and the fact that our town was recognized, whichever school it would have been, I think we have great schools across the board, but the fact that the Taylor got that, I thought, I thought it was fabulous to read, and bravo to, you know, everybody. The article talked about, you know, it's not just your administration, it's your educators, it's your, you know, your, your custodians, you know, everybody pulls together to make a school what it is. And the principal there, Mike Stanton, he was at the IGO once upon a time, and I'm, I'm gonna tell you, it, it, when he, Harley went to the IGO at one point, Mike Stanton is phenomenal, and we're, we're lucky to have him in this town, no matter what school he, he ended up at.
no matter what school he ended up at. There was a big talk, you know, in the article, and there was a picture of him at bus duty and greeting all these kids as they're getting off the bus, mentioning them by name. And I know, people think, okay, it's easy, it's your school, you see these kids all the time. To remember hundreds of kids' names, you know, I don't think there's any, you know, maybe that's easy for teachers or, you know, in administration. But I just want to mention, I wrote a letter to the editor about Mike. God, it's got to be 10-plus years, maybe a little bit longer. And he started a buddy program, which they have at the high school, but he also brought it to the IGO school, and he allowed the entire fourth grade to go to the Special Olympics. So of course, for me, I was there, you know, with Harley, you know, signs, chairing, and the, the community that he made at the IGO, and now he's bringing that, his, you know, this excellence to the Taylor School. I just, you know, I just wanted to mention, I'm sure the school committee probably at their meeting mentioned all this, but, you know, he's, he's, he's a special guy, and we're very lucky to have him as an administrator here in our town. And, and the only other thing that I, you know, I have to say is, the word is out, Drake May on Sunday. So, you know, for, for all the Patriots fan, you know, you know, maybe it's going to give a little, little bit of energy to, to the town, I think, you know, with what's been going on. But, so I just had to, that was, I guess, this afternoon, the big announcement, Drake May. So anyhow.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I know it was coming.
Yep. I'm just hoping he doesn't go out on a stretcher, the first game, you know.
Jesus, oh man.
But anyhow, yeah. So anyhow, anybody else have anything that wants to?
Two things.
Go right ahead.
Sidewalks down Union Street and Rock Hill look outstanding.
Great.
Compared to the road, it's a different story.
We're getting there, we're getting there.
We're getting there. They really did a great job. If you guys walk around there a little bit, they did a great job on the sidewalks. Also, Paige and I were invited to meet with the MBTA Advisory Board the other day. I'm the representative from the board to it, and they had, you know, Hannah, how do you pronounce her last name?
I think it's Sidelowski.
Sidelowski. She's on the advisory board of the MBTA, but coincidentally, she's also a select woman over in Sharon, Isabella McKinnon, and Brian Kane. We met with them here. First thing they said right off the bat was, we have nothing to do with MBTA communities. The MBTA advisory. But they brought up a very interesting point that they, one of the reasons why they came to us, and they're going to all the communities, coincidentally, they were going to Sharon next, is, you know, funding for the MBTA is way down. We all know that it's in a deficit. But one of the things they brought up is, here we have a program put on by Governor MBTA Communities, which is building up apartments to be around MBTA stations, but there's no corresponding increase in the rail service to those potential increases of use. And they see that as a huge problem down the road. So they're trying to let us know, and the communities know, that maybe might want to discuss, you know, this with our legislators, that this is an issue that shouldn't be way down on the list of, of things that they have to worry about, but, but to start thinking about the long-term ramifications of the MBTA communities. So wanted to bring that up. Thank you, Paige, for reminding me. I had the book here, and I didn't even bring it out, that folder. I was going to bring it up, but had a nice letter back to us and thanking us for meeting with them. But one of the other long-term ramifications of MBTA communities is, you know, the MBTA.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we're in trouble without the MBTA communities, but their, their point is, is we're in trouble today before a single unit's built.
Built.
But you start building units, you know, we're really in trouble. So their point is, is we need to start funding the MBTA regardless of these communities. Now's the time to start focusing on where we are.
Is there any talk about having the communities themselves have to put money up for funding of this stuff?
Not that I've heard.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what I have.
And we did bring up the issue of, you know, as you know, during town meeting, there was the informal referendum, seeking to remove ourselves from, you know, getting rid of our MBTA train station, and they basically laughed at us.
I was going to say.
Our town attorney had said the same thing, that that's just not an option, that we can't just remove ourselves, but they, you know, they politely laughed at us.
After Brian stopped laughing, you said, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, because did everybody, was anyone got that email? Did everybody see the email of that? I think it was, I'm trying to think who sent it to me and said, hey, you guys were supposed to work on it. Did that come to everybody?
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember. So I called Paige right away, and I said, am I forget, like, like it just wasn't really clicking in my head. And, you know, she said, yeah, it's, it's non-binding, and, you know, it, I mean, how do you, how do you go to the MBTA and just say, we don't want you anymore?
Never mind.
Yeah, that, yeah, that doesn't, yeah, that doesn't happen.
Station go.
Yeah, okay.
Into the millions you put into it.
Yes.
Yep.
That's a good point, though. No one's talking about beefing up the MBTA once you have all these communities
Yep.
in place.
Yeah.
You know, so that'll be more billions of dollars going to the MBTA, and we know how well that gets spent.
More failures.
Yeah, and then, I mean, obviously, the draw is to, maybe like in Mansfield, how they built all those apartments. And so I, I think that people then, if they decide to live there, they're thinking, oh, I can just walk and hop on the train. I don't need, you know, some people, they don't even have a car, and, but I just saw on the news this morning, the Orange Line is shut down for, like, you know, a good hunk of it, and now they're talking about buses. And so, yeah, this, this is, maintenance is, will always be coming up, and then you get all these people here, and now they won't even be able to hop on the train that they decided to live in these communities to, to get to, and they won't even be able to get on the train when, you know, so. Yeah, something more down the road to discuss. Anything else? Have anything, anything else they want to share?
No.
We have a lot of action items.
Yep.
Oh, you know, you know, oh my God, I was about getting ready to adjourn. Forgot about the, the action items. All right, Deb, you're up.
Change of Hours application, Laced Pizza and Pub LLC, DBA Laced Pizza and Pub located at 94 Washington Street, to serve alcohol starting at 10:00 AM on Sundays for brunch.
Second.
Undiscussed.
Is this all Sundays, or is this just the, all Sunday?
All Sundays.
All Sundays.
Is he, he's up, he's up and running. I know, I know we did the liquor license, but he's, he's open and?
I don't think he's open just yet.
Okay.
And the liquor license is still under review by the ABCC, so we haven't heard on that yet.
Oh, okay. We, we said, we approved it, but then they're waiting on approval there. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to approve a one-day beer and wine license for Bee Harpy Brewing LLC, DBA Wormtown Brewery for October 19th, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM for Patriots Place Harvest Fest.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to appoint Jonathan Glover to the Foxborough Historical Commission for a term to end 5/31/27.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve, to appoint Richard Letson to the Veteran Ed Services Advisory Committee for a term to end 5/31/2025.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve a memorial bench in memory of Elizabeth R. Smith, donated by Judith Duffy.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve a memorial bench in memory of Dr. Kevin P. Duffy, donated by Judith Duffy.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the donation from Judith Duffy in the amount of $2,400 for two memorial benches.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accept the donations for the Veteran Vanna Project in the amount of $2,730 from the following donors: the Jameson family, Rolling Thunder, Foxborough J.C.'s, Murphy family, Chirico family, Pitt Stockman family, Cataloni family, Brode family, the Blaze family, the Butler family, the Lancaster family, the Hall family, the Perkins family, the Peterson family, the Gay family, the Gould family, the Everson family, Kurt Paulister, Marilyn Paulister, and the Paulister family.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to accept a donation from James Miller in the amount of $9,900 to be used for the Pace and Field basketball courts.
$9,990.
Excuse me?
Second.
All those in favor? I mean, I'm sorry, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept a donation from Beverly Lord in the amount of $160 to support the Foxborough in the Borough, Fox in the Borough Mug Project.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the updated Foxborough Historical Commission list of approved street names.
Second.
Okay, under discussion, I just wanted to, I did, I did talk to, I called Katie. I just wanted to make sure that we had a couple of, I don't know if anybody had the same questions as me. I guess I was going a little too much into it. I guess just as, we're just approving the, the names, and as revised, I guess the questions I had were, but she said they will take care of this in planning and historical. Just want to make sure everybody else, you know, didn't think what I was thinking. So I think, based on what it said, so in other words, the street would be called Kinsman, whether it's streetway, that's just, you know, planning decides based on the type of road it is, what it, what it's done. And then the other, the other thing I had was just, you know, what this says about them wanting it to be near where their square is, I just thought that's kind of a little, unless they decide they want to over, you know, bypass someone, because there isn't going to be, you know, new streets being put up all over town. So did anybody else have any, you know, maybe I was the only one that was thinking a little too much into it.
No, I think at our last meeting, we discussed not having, you know,
Yeah.
second lieutenant, blah, 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 as a street name being two things. So they, they agreed in going back that basically they would use the last name and have a plaque
Yeah.
or something that would commemorate the, the full information on the individual, which to me makes a lot of sense, so.
Exactly, the second underneath. Okay, perfect. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to approve the state election warrant.
Second, I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the select board meeting minutes from September 24th, 2024.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
That was not a recommendation.
Good night, everybody. We'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.